Welcome, everyone. Thank you for attending the Hennepin County Board Commissioner Candidate Forum. I am Corinne Shepherd, President of the Bloomington League of Women Voters, and I'm here this evening with Susan Rosenberg, who is President of the Richfield League of Women Voters. Our two leagues have worked together to make this candidate forum available to the voters in Hennepin County District 5. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that never endorses any political party or candidate. Our purpose in hosting the forum is to provide you, the public, with the opportunity to learn more about the candidates so that you can make an informed voting decision. Your vote is your power, and it will result in your voice being heard. Election Day is Tuesday, November 5th, and early in-person voting is available here at Bloomington Civic Plaza, starting September 20th, that's next Friday, and early voting is also in-person available at Richfield City Hall. We hope that this forum, as well as the candidate videos, which are posted on our website, and that of the city, and will be replayed on Bloomington TV, will provide you with the information that you need to assist you in making your voting decision. Tonight, our forum is a good opportunity to evaluate our candidates, and now I'll turn it over to Susan.
Thank you, Corinne. First of all, I want to thank you for coming tonight. This is really an important step because, like Corinne said, we in the league believe that an informed and educated voter is a better voter, so thank you for coming. And I want to thank the candidates. I've got candidates, but I'm going to say just thank you, Debbie Gutell, candidate, for the time and effort that you have dedicated to running for office and for participating in this forum. In these days of political polarization, we can be proud of our candidates for the efforts they make to run positive campaigns and for demonstrating the civility in this forum that is becoming of the office they seek and what reflects the attitudes and demeanor of our community as a whole. We ask that the members of the audience not clap, cheer, or otherwise do anything that may disrupt the forum or the recording process. Thank you to the members of the League of Women Voters of Bloomington and of Richfield, Voter Service Committee for planning this event, to the City of Bloomington for use of these council chambers, and to Bloomington TV for recording and broadcasting this forum on Bloomington TV. This forum will be posted for viewing online on the League of Women Voters Bloomington website, on the City of Bloomington website, and on YouTube. This forum will be broadcast multiple times on Bloomington TV. And I have a personal thank you. I want to thank you, say to Catherine Houston. She called me last spring and said, "What do you think? Do you want to join us to provide this forum, the League of Women Voters of Richfield?" And I said, "Sure, let's do this." And I love partnerships, I love getting to know people, and I love to learn something. So thank you, Catherine, for bringing this to the City of Richfield League of Women Voters. We really appreciate the efforts and the opportunity. So now I'm going to turn this over to Debbie McNeil, who's our... Debbie is a member of the St. Louis Park League and an experienced moderator. She will now identify the rules of the forum and will introduce you to the candidate. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Presidents. Good evening, everyone. I am Debbie McNeil, and I actually am a member of the League of Women Voters Edina, but I have high regard for the League of Women Voters St. Louis Park. And I'm the moderator for tonight's forum, and I've completed moderator training required by the state league. Before we get started, let's all get out our cellphones and put them on silent or turn them off. We ask that you do not use personal devices to record this event because that could distract or obstruct other people's view. Please remain quiet while the candidate is speaking so everyone can hear, and hold your applause until the end of the forum so that we'll have maximum time to respond to questions. The League of Women Voters Minnesota and local leagues conduct candidate forums to provide the public with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss issues that are important to them. The league is a nonpartisan organization that does not support or oppose any political party or candidate. The views expressed in every league forum are those of the candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters. League of Women Voters Minnesota and local leagues post complete, unedited recordings of forums, and excerpts or edited clips may not be used for political purposes. This forum is being video recorded in its entirety, and that recording is the sole property of the League of Women Voters. This evening, you will hear from one of the two candidates for Hennepin County Commissioner, District 5, discuss issues that are important to the residents of the district. Both candidates for office were invited, but unfortunately Jeffrey Beck is ill and unable to participate tonight. But both candidates confirmed by their signature their commitment to abide by the forum procedures and rules, and copies of the forum rules are posted in the lobby. We're going to try and cover as many issues as we can in the time we have, which is just a little under one hour. If your questions are not addressed tonight, please feel free to contact the candidates directly. So here's the format for tonight's forum. The candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement and one minute for closing argument, closing statement, and two minutes to answer each question. And league volunteers sitting in the front here, Karen Jenkins and Karen Dinan, will time the candidate responses, and they will hold up signs that show when the candidate has 30 seconds left, when there is only 15 seconds left, and when they must stop. And so we ask that the candidate respect the time limits. And as moderator, I'll ask all the questions, and League of Women Voters Bloomington and Richfield will determine which questions will be asked and will attempt in good faith to cover the topics of interest indicated by the questions submitted. Some questions were submitted by email prior to this evening, and you may also submit questions during this event by filling out a card that you were provided with. Please write your question on the card and hand it to a volunteer who's collecting cards. And those people who are collecting, would you raise your hand so everyone can see? Okay, thank you very much. The question facilitators this evening, to my right, are Maureen Scalia of the Richfield League and Cynthia Jorgensen of the Bloomington League. All the questions that are submitted become the property of the League of Women Voters. No campaign materials or signs or brochures or cards or buttons or clothing with candidate information is allowed in Bloomington Civic Plaza. I ask the candidate to speak directly into the microphone because this is being recorded and that way everyone can hear you, and please look at the audience when you answer, not at me. And now let me finally introduce to you the candidate who is here tonight, who is running for a four-year term as Hennepin County Commissioner. This is Ms. Debbie Gutell.
Thank you. Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Maybe the best thing would be if we start with your opening statement for two minutes, and then we'll proceed to questions.
Sure.
So thank you very much.
Thanks. First of all, I want to start by thanking the League of Women Voters. For years and years, you have been doing this tirelessly. It's never more important than it is now. Hyper-local newspapers are dying. A lot of stuff's going online, some of it's just obliterated. They're going out of business. How do the residents get the information of the local candidates that are running for office? The ones that serve you, that fix your roads, that come to your door when you need help? It's very difficult. I really think that the League of Women Voters is a bastion of wonderful information that still gives this back to the people with your work here. So thank you for doing that. I just want to say that. That really matters to us candidates at the local level. I'm Hennepin County Commissioner Debbie Gutell, and I am up for reelection for another four-year term. The district of District 5, the area that it spans is Richfield, Bloomington, a large part of Eden Prairie, mostly south of Crosstown, which is 62, and then a small piece of three neighborhoods in Minneapolis now since the redistricting. So Hennepin County, one of the biggest questions I get is, "What do you do? You know, what does a Hennepin County Commissioner do?" Well, we do a lot of the same things that your city council and your mayor does, but on top of that, we're the safety net. We are the safety net. When somebody can't pay their rent, when they can't find food, when there's a tragic and there's issues with mental health, those kinds of things, that's who Hennepin County is. We have a hospital, we have public safety, we have the coroner's office, we have a lot... It's a huge organization. We build roads just like your city does, we do a lot of the same things that happens, but at a much broader scale throughout the entire county, one and a half million people and residents here. So that's what the county commissioner does.
Thank you very much for that opening. We thought, along the lines of what you just said, we thought we'd start by asking how the county board works. Can you tell us what areas beyond what you've already said that they are responsible for?
Well, actually, we hire the administrator, and so there are seven county board members. Depending on the city, there's a certain amount of council members. So the county boards and different county boards have different numbers on them as well. Ours is seven, there are seven districts throughout that. We are all elected bodies, and we hire an administrator to run the day-to-day operations and business for us, and he reports directly, then he or she reports directly to us as the board. We oversee a vast majority of that county budget, that's $2.9 billion coming up this next year. We also set a levy limit for those kinds of things that happen for the next year for your taxes, so we set that. We do assessing, so lots of times too, when you're looking at what is the value of your house, we do those kinds of things. We have the county sheriff, we have the county attorney's office, both those are the part of the public safety piece of things. We appoint to the watershed districts, we appoint to various committees we have throughout the year, the libraries. People love their libraries. We have a library board. I actually am honored to be able to say that I serve on that. We have a Hennepin History Museum, a lot of people don't know that. I serve on the Hennepin History Museum, it's fabulous, fabulous. We have a golf course. Believe it or not, we actually have a golf course, and we run a golf course too, at a very reasonable rate, so people who want to learn how to play golf. We give enormous amounts of grant dollars away for various things such as housing, such as environmental grants, environmental cleanup grants, all, public safety, violence prevention throughout the entire county to try to help cities augment their own budgets to do the good work that they want to do. So those are some of the other things the board does.
Thank you. So if you were writing a job description for commissioner, what would you say the skills would be that are required or best to have?
You know, I talk to candidates about this a lot because it takes a whole skill set to run a campaign, and I see some of my fellow people who've held office out here many times. And the whole idea about that is that takes a whole skill set to do that, but then it takes a whole nother skill set to govern things. I think you need to be curious. I think when you first get to office, you need to sit back and listen and not demand too many things. I think you need to learn, but I think you need to be diving in for the facts, and I think you need to never forget that you represent the people. You're elected by the people, not any of your other county board members or anyone else, but you represent those people. And the only way that you know what they need and what they desire is to be out among them. So you need to go to their events, you need to be seen at farmer's markets, you need to go to the festivals, you need to... I door knock every season, the reason I do, even when I'm not up for election. I do that because then I find out what's really going on with people at the doors. You know, you need to be open-minded about that. Anybody who calls and asks for a meeting gets a meeting with me if I can make any kind of time at all in my day. This is important. Those are the people. The loud voices are not necessarily the voices of all the people, and so sometimes you have to go out and find those voices. And so I'm regularly making a route to senior high rises to go talk to them, Rotary Clubs, Optimist Clubs, all these places out in the community where I can get the voice and it comes back to me about what's really going on in the cities. I also meet regularly with city managers and city staff and council members because then they tell me what's going on at their level and they let me know what's going on. I also then meet with our representatives, and they let me know what they're thinking of legislation. I can take that back to the cities, and then I can be a louder voice for all of us.
Thank you. So you mentioned diving in for the facts, and that leads to the next question, which is how do you research things in order to make a decision as a county commissioner?
Sometimes I do my own research, and I'm actually very fortunate in the role that I have at the county that I'm in. I have two staff members, one of them sitting in the audience here tonight, thank you for being here, Graham. I ask them to do some of the policy work for me. I also, we have a national organization where I can also call and get some of that information from our national organization. We have a state organization where I can get that same information, the Association of Minnesota Counties and the National Association of Counties. Those are two great places, but sometimes I'm looking for something even more innovative. And then we start searching on our own for internet stuff, we start looking at university websites, and then we try to find some of the experts who can come and talk to us. And sometimes I go back to staff, and I just say, "We don't have enough information to make a good decision. Where can we get more information so we're better informed?" You know, so that's where you start, that's where you go, and you keep fighting until you can get enough to make a good decision. Sometimes you don't have as much as you'd like, and sometimes we still have to make a decision. Those are always the tough times. That's when it's nice to be able to go back to some of my colleagues at the city and say, and to my cities I serve, and say, "What do you think about this? What have you heard? What do you know?" And that's very helpful to me to get input from other folks.
So if a person has an issue or a concern, how would they bring that before the county board?
Well, sometimes they come to the open forum. We have an open forum at the beginning of the committee meetings every month, then sometimes twice a month. And so I actually, that's part of mine, is the administration committees, and so they can bring it up and they can voice their concerns there. However, we don't respond to those concerns. They can write, and they can call, and they can meet with us. And sometimes it comes through staff, but other times they call me on the phone, and sometimes we go out and have coffee. Depends on what their comfort level is. Not everybody feels comfortable coming up to a dais and talking, and some people feel quite intimidated by coming into the chambers and doing it that way. So I will meet them sometimes out in community rather than even doing that, but I invite a lot of people up to have coffee in my office. The office that we work in is actually the people's office. It's not my office, it's our office. So I invite people up there anytime they're downtown, even if I'm not in there, my staff are there, to come up and have coffee with my staff in the office and see where the county body is and where they work. And we'll take them around on a small tour and everything if they'd like to. Many times, two other groups want to know about one specific thing or something. They want to know, "How does the HERC work? You know, what is it like, you know, in the forensics labs?" And I go, "Would you like a tour?" And I arrange those tours for small groups of folks who'd like to see that. And it's really enlightening, so they get to see and know what their county is about, and they get to find out and ask their own questions. There's so many things we do there that people don't know about.
So following up on that question, if a person wanted to, for instance, get a tour of the HERC or the forensics lab, how would they arrange that? Would they email someone?
They can email, or they can call the office, or lots of times too, there's places online where you can actually do it too. And then there's also classes. Much like you have citizens academies here in Bloomington and in Richfield and Eden Prairie, we have citizens academies for Hennepin County. So if you really want to know what the county does, I would invite you to go sign up for those classes. They fill really fast. I remember, because before I became a county commissioner, I got to go to one of those classes and sit through it, and I got to educate myself, but also just to find the facilities. Like our, one of our big transportation and our dispatch is way out of Medina, but it's a very cool place to visit. And they let you climb on the yellow equipment and everything, they get, they let you play with the stoplights that they have out there. But I mean, you really see what they do and what they have to do to fix things and everything. And they usually have some of the workers there who are out on the roads to talk to you about this. You could ask your specific questions about how they fix potholes or how they re-signal lanes when they're doing construction and things like that. It's quite fascinating, there's a lot to it. You can ask them about a snowplow too. You can climb up in the snowplows. They're huge, they're huge pieces of equipment. It's amazing, and it's a really good time, and I would encourage people to do that. And when they have their open houses, and they do every so often, if you get up on the website and sign up for their little newsletter piece of that, take the kids out there. The kids love this stuff. This is so good because we need workers in our county and all of our government offices. We need them at the city level, at the county and the state level, and if you expose them to it at this age, this is a great place for them to get a great education about, you know, what's the government doing for you.
Thank you. What do you think the most contentious issues are that the Hennepin County Board is currently working on?
Currently working on, I think, one of the contentious issues is balancing the budget with the hospital right now. That's probably our biggest issue right now. I think the second issue would be the staffing at the, in our sheriff's offices, our county jail, and our juvenile justice. Those are issues that we've suffered from the pandemic with and we're still dealing with. So the county hospital is a safety net hospital. We have an awful lot of uncompensated care, meaning they don't have insurance, and there's growing need for people coming in our emergency room doors. And that means there's more dollars that we have to come up with. The county actually is responsible for the uncompensated care, the hospital's not, we are, as the county board. We actually own all the infrastructure. The county hospital is actually a subsidiary of Hennepin County, so we have jurisdiction over it. So people don't understand that relationship, but because we can't let that county hospital fail, there would be no place for people to go. And so we are Level 1 Trauma Center, and right now, one percentage point of the increase in the tax levy is going to the hospital to keep it afloat. That's a big issue. The other big issue is we're seeing the jail population rise with violent felons, and so we're concerned about that. Just saw the piece go, come by our desk where we're going to house some of those people down in Dakota County because we're getting very full, and we don't have enough staff. We are trying to hire, we're working on it, same with our juvenile justice. We have these kids in trouble. We tried to work with a legislator to get a regional facility started, that didn't get passed. We're hopeful that the next session we can do this. I'm really concerned, we need to be taking better care of our kids.
Could you tell us why you're running for Hennepin County Commissioner?
Well, there's a lot of work that I want to do at Hennepin County. I first ran for Hennepin County Commissioner because I was seeing what was going on in the community. I was mayor of the City of Richfield. I saw some of our veterans suffering, I saw some of our elderly suffering, and I saw parents with kids who had mental health issues and things, and we had no resources at the city level, in the City of Richfield, for those kinds of things. And I really wanted to help those people more, and I was consistently calling Randy Johnson. I had, he was the county commissioner at the time, I have his cellphone number. We had lots of dinners out. "Randy, I need help with this. Randy, I need you to do this. Randy, how can I get resources for this?" And I really realized that I could do more for my community if I actually ran for the county board and made sure that our communities were taken care of and that they knew that they could call my office and somebody's going to pick up the phone. It's so heartwarming to get some of the text messages and the letters and the emails back from a mom whose quadriplegic daughter, they were trying to discharge from the hospital without the proper care to get her off the ventilator and get her back where she wanted. And she called us, and through the weekend, I was working on this. We got her to the correct place. She's off the ventilator, she's back home, and she's doing great, but they would have pushed her out to a care facility that we're not sure would have taken good care, and we're not sure if she would have made it very well. So those are the kinds of things that I'm going to continue doing. We have the Southwest Light Rail that we need to finish, we're still working on this hospital. I'm determined to right this ship for that hospital. I'm also determined to try to do better on the mental health for our kids, and so we're working on that too. There's unfinished business I have. I want to finish that.
Thank you. This is a question on the Hennepin Energy Recovery Center. The Hennepin Energy Recovery Center is slated to close because of air pollution complaints. Before closing, would the board consider a scientific study that would close HERC, that's the center, for a reasonable time and test the air quality before, during, and after closure, and gather data from trash haulers to compare what is more environmentally friendly, landfills or the Hennepin Energy Recovery Center?
Well, that's an interesting premise and an interesting question to pose in that direction. I think I will come at that at a different way, though. One of the things that I'm working on, and you asked about how do you get the facts and how do you research things, well, I've been researching the Danish burners over there, the recovery and energy. They have zero emission energy facilities over there that burn trash. We are over there now, one of our staff members is over there, looking into that particular technology right now. How the energy recovery works is we actually have two full burners. So one burner is always going, well, lots of times, one is down and being repaired. What we could do is take one down and try this new technology and see if we could make it zero emissions. That, that's the issue that we, that the community brought to us. It wasn't the trucks hauling so much as it was, because the trucks would still haul. The trucks would just have to haul it to a landfill if we closed. They'd just be hauling it someplace else. It doesn't stop the pollution. The pollution that they're talking about is coming through the stack, although we are well below permit. It's still pollution, there's still pollution coming out there, but can we get it to zero? I don't know. I'm hopeful, I'm very hopeful. If somebody else has already done it, that technology exists. I want to find out if I can put it into this particular facility and if it'll work. And I won't have that answer right away, but we're looking into it right now. I don't have all the facts. They just got back from, and they're going to be talking to us soon, and we're going to be having a meeting of the Partnership on Waste and Energy. There are three county commissioners through three different counties who sit together on that board, and that's what we work on together, solutions like that.
We have a question next on ranked choice voting. It says, "To fill a vacancy on the county board this spring, there was a primary and then a general election. The cost of these special elections could have been reduced with ranked choice voting," according to the questioner. "Do you support a local option bill that would give the counties the ability to use ranked choice voting?"
I don't believe we had a primary for county board for Hennepin County seats. I think other counties have, but not us. I don't believe we had a county primary.
Just speaking from my own memory, there was a primary in District 6.
In District 6, okay. Yeah, but I know I didn't have a primary, so we don't always have primaries, so sometimes we do, sometimes we don't. Ranked choice, choice voting, I know it's a huge controversial issue right now and coming back up in Bloomington right now. You know, it's funny, was you're on the candidate's side, you like to know who your opponent is, and you'd like it to be whittled down to one, but on the voter's side of it, it's nice to have more than one choice. So yes, actually, I do support ranked choice voting. I think it should be a choice for folks. I think it's probably better for the voters. I think it takes some time getting used to for voters, and of course, you are hearing from some that aren't necessarily happy with it too because it's change. I think change is always hard for folks, but it might be a fairer way to have a voting process.
Thank you. We have a question on mental health for youth, which you alluded to a few minutes ago, and here's the question. "Young people in particular are grappling with mental health issues. What do you believe are the best ways that the county can help them?"
Well, I was hopeful. One of the ways is to get more facilities and more folks working in that, in the local area. A lot of times, we end up shipping these kids pretty far away from their families. That's not good for them when they have huge crises, especially if they have violent actions along with them. We don't have a lot of facilities. That's why we took an opportunity to the state legislature to have a regional facility with several of the other counties that want to come together so that we could work this together. We also asked for them to do licensure differently. Facilities that are licensed with youth have to be licensed separate if the kids have any violent tendencies at all. We'd like them to be able to combine in some circumstances. We think it might be better for the youth, along with kids who have mental health, just in general, because we think that as young as some of these kids are, that they would be better off with other kids. And so we're hopeful that we'll get something on a regional basis together. Currently, we do have mental health capabilities in our schools. Sometimes that has worked better than others, sometimes it's really hard to keep some of those mental health care workers there. We also have COPE, which is a response team 24/7 through Hennepin County, so if there is something going on, kids or adults, we can respond to that. The other program we have is the embedded social worker. Now, they can deal with youth or adults, and that embedded social worker knows out in your community who has mental health issues. They know a lot about them, they know their doctors and other things, so they're a resource. However, they're not 24/7. COPE is 24/7, but they do have a two-hour response time. But this is a full licensed psychiatrist who comes out in the middle of the night to help you with a crisis in your family. I don't know anybody else who has that kind of response for this. We're looking really hard, and I know that... And I know that the fire department are also looking to have some embedded social workers for that very reason, for those kinds of things. So thank you.
This question is about speed limits on county roads. Who decides and how are speed limits determined for county roads?
Well, we're having that debate ourselves because a lot of folks have come to us and asked us to bring these county road speed limits down. And we're doing, we're, we're in the same program as our cities are and our state. We're trying to race to zero fatalities. And speed is one of the issues that we're talking about. Now, I think it's fabulous that Richfield and Bloomington have lowered their speed limits. I have brought this to our Public Works Director. I have had conversations about that. And the state has had, had itself decided to come into our conversations. And so we are now working with the state to try to talk to them about what our limits can be to lower speed limits. Now, if it's near a school or another things like this, we have jurisdiction over lowering that. But the state is telling us that we can't just necessarily lower our speed limits because we're reliever roads for state roads. So therein lies the problem that we're having in some of those conversations. But we're not giving up yet because we're going to go back to this. Because saving lives, making sure that people on bikes, pedestrians and this general car accidents, you know, are much less fatal than they are to make it safer for people crossing roads and stuff like this. I live off of 66th Street and most of you here live close enough to know how that is. From 35W to Penn Avenue, it's a raceway. And it's really sad because there's a park across that street. And it's very difficult. I can tell you personally, it's very difficult to get across to walk the dog there. And it's not safe. And how do we bring safety? Speed is a piece of it. I'm for allowing the counties to lower the speed limits with and work with the cities on how to do that.
Thank you. This question is about the Metropolitan Council. How do you perceive the relationship between the county board and the Metropolitan Council?
Well, that depends. And it depends on who you're dealing with, if you're dealing with the housing folks or if you're doing with the environmental folks or if you're dealing with the transportation folks. Because they're all very different and they're very siloed. Or if you're dealing with the board itself, the Metropolitan Council folks. So I sit on the Technical Advisory Board. And that's called the TAB. There's, along with city and county and community, we have hundreds of millions of dollars that come through there every year, of federal and state and granted dollars for your transportation, your roads, your bridges and other infrastructure, bike trails, those kinds of things that come through there. I would say that's very well-run. I would say it's exceptionally well-run. Now, on the housing side, as a mayor, I would say that I was extremely frustrated with some of the requirements that we were supposed to have for zoning residential areas into very high density when they were fully built up. And also some of the ideas of where we could put and get density in where we couldn't. We had to schedule that in. It, it was because we were told we had to do it, but we had no land that was developable. So it, it was very frustrating for cities. And that was one of the issues that I had. They also gutted the Fair Housing Act out of their housing plan. And when they did that, they were sued. And the Federal Housing and Fair Act came back in and said, "You will write this program back and you will put it back in there to make sure that there is furthering fair housing." And so I did bring that up because I sat on their housing task force. And that was very disappointing that they, I didn't feel listened to at that time. I think there's, there's, a lot of those people have since moved on. And I think it's a different Met Council at this time.
This is about Commissioner Pay. What are your thoughts about Hennepin County Commissioner Pay?
Well, let's talk about the elephant in the room. Everybody thought we were getting a 60% increase. We did not. And people thought we, we passed that through the county board. We did not. We passed it out of committee. And the reason I voted for it, and several of us other did, is because we knew it would be negotiated down. But people don't knew that. They only, they only see the political football. They only see the sensationalism and there's, "Oh, it's this high. We're going to give ourselves, the county board's giving themselves a big raise." No, we gave ourselves a 5% raise. Our salaries have been flat for 15 years. And they haven't been raised hardly at all in that period of time. And it's because it's such a political quagmire to try to give ourselves a raise. I really wonder whether we should be doing that. The, the state legislature doesn't do it anymore. They have a third-party review. And I've asked whether we could be looking at a statute change for that as well. Because I don't think we should be making our own pay raises. I think we should be looking at a market value and, and like other government entities do and find out and pay a market value for folks. And not put it in the political football. So you have to have a lot of courage because you have to do it in an election year. So there's always going to be somebody up. I'm one of those who's up. I am up for reelection. So I had to vote for my own pay raise, right? And so that's how that goes. I'm not sure, it's a very fair, just or equalizing way to do things. I worry about that system too, because it's also down at the lower levels, at school boards and counties, not just counties. So it's also at the councils. And when you look out west in our communities out west, they can't get people to run for those seats because they can't raise the salaries, because nobody has the political will to want to have to fight the ugliness in the newspaper when it comes up, right? Nobody thinks anybody should have a raise when you're a government official. It's, it's a sad state of affairs and we can't get people to run for really good government places. We need them.
Thank you. This is a question about people who are homeless or unhoused. The question says, "People who are unhoused is a growing problem in Hennepin County. What do you propose that the board do to help alleviate this situation?"
Well, we're doing a lot. And there's good news and there's bad news on that. So we were really working hard through the pandemic because there was a lot of people we were concerned with were going to be evicted. And so we gave them attorneys. We have attorneys that still meet people at eviction court. And 80% of the time, we keep them out of eviction. And we work a deal with their landlord. And sometimes we pay their back rent. And sometimes we don't get them, we get them out of the eviction, but we have to find them other housing and we do that. We have a social worker there too. And so that's some of it. But what the good news is, is we kept seeing a skyrocketing eviction rate. Now we've seen it level off. It hasn't tipped down, but it's leveled off. That's a really good sign for us. One of the other good signs is those who live in Bloomington know that there was a homeless shelter here. In October, that will be closed. Because we don't need that large of a facility anymore. Because we're housing families faster than they're coming in. Finally, we're getting ahead of that. Families are finding us. We're being able to get up the curve and put them into homes before they're homeless. We could get to more of them, I hope we can. We're running out of emergency assistant aides for that, like CAPHC and some of the other organizations. We're going to try to tap into some state funds to try to keep that going in the direction it is. But when you see a homeless person, and we see them out on the corners, we, we drive through all these different places. We see them and they're holding the signs and everything up. I can tell you that that person has been touched probably four times that day, if not more. They've been offered food. They've been offered water. They've been touched by either Hennepin County worker or somebody from your city. They've been offered shelter more than one time to do that. And what happens is we're turned down. They're just not ready to come in. We've offered them addiction services. They turn us down. They're not there yet. We never stop asking. We know them by name. We, we help them out on a regular basis and we won't stop doing that.
This is another question about housing, but in this case about affordable housing. What are your best ideas for affordable housing for working families? And how would the county board fit into that situation?
Well, I'm excited to hear about the work that's going on with what the candidates are discussing at the, at the presidential level. Affordable housing is a huge crisis and they've noted it finally. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So did our legislature. They gave us money. They gave us a quarter of a penny of a cent tax, but you think that's not a whole lot? It is. That's $12 million this year, $30 million next year. We already put $147 million into housing and housing supports. And we put in about 40 extra million on that through the pandemic. So over 100 and, what, close to $190 million into housing and housing support systems. What we're going to do with that extra money right now is help the naturally occurring affordable housing with all their pent-up need. We're going to help landlords who carried, carried unpaid rent. If they can prove that they have it, we're going to try to make them whole so they'll stay with their affordable housing. We're also going to increase our emergency assistance. We're seeing a huge increase in calls for the emergency assistance to pay rent and mortgages. So we will be working on that in the future to give more dollars for that so that we can stabilize. Now, next year, when the dollars go up and we'll, we'll, we'll kind of reassess and see where we're at. And then we'll decide whether we can look at other, other kinds of dollars to go otherwise. But we are first money in for a lot of affordable housing that's being built. People don't realize that we actually invest in those kinds of things. And housing support services for some of those people who have those special needs, who have people who need caregivers on a regular basis. We bring those kinds of services to folks right now.
We have two related questions on Hennepin County Medical Center or Hennepin Healthcare, as it was called. And so I'll tell you both of them at once. One of them is about governance. What is your position on Hennepin County Medical Center's governance structure? Should the board, the county commissioners, take back the governance or leave it with Hennepin Healthcare? The second one is, what is your position on the Hennepin County Medical Center's funding issues since the Twins stadium tax was not diverted to HCMC, according to the questioner?
I'm going to, or I'm going to ask, I'm going to answer the second one first because I already told you. We are, 1% of the levy increase is going to save our, our hospital. We had to do that. So 5.5% levy is the maximum levy we can have right now. So if we didn't have the hospital issue, it would have been 4.5%. But we have the hospital and it's vital. We have to have that hospital for our community. And so that's how we're solving for it right now. We are going to go back after that ballpark tax. We are already in conversations with representatives. And they're listening and they're very interested in looking to see if we can do that. There's a lot of old infrastructure that we can make more efficiencies in that hospital if we had the ability to be able to take down some of those old buildings and build them. The new clinic is phenomenal with everything that we have. But so many of those old buildings are extremely inefficient. And some of them are kind of disastrous. You should go for a tour for some of those. Some of them you go up and down. I don't know how people find their ways around these things. Up and down places too, because they're not even at the same levels when they connect to go there. And they're having to bring people on gurneys through places where public people are, which isn't, it, it isn't, that, that's not dignity. So we need to be, we need to raise a couple of those buildings. We need to make a new surgical unit. A whole lot of things need to happen over there at the county hospital. On the board issue. The board, no, we, we did not ever bring up, people brought up the idea to us. That was employees who brought up the idea of dissolving the board. No, we did not. The board is working because we found the issues that they were having through the current governance. We are looking at the board's structure, however, about who sits on the board. And so we're going to, we have had already discussions about whether there should be more input from the employees on that board. And who else should sit on that board? And should there be other commissioners on that board? And so that's currently under discussion right now, but along with the hospital and the hospital board.
Thank you. This is a question about hazardous waste. What steps would you support to further reduce hazardous waste in Hennepin County?
Oh, I love this. This is a great question. First of all, thank you, whoever decided to ask that question. First of all, I sit on the Partnership on Waste and Energy. That's Ramsey and Washington Counties along with Hennepin. And we rotate the chair on that particular thing. We bring all kinds of legislative ideas to the legislature. One of them was the Producer Responsibility Act that just passed. And that's about reducing all the packaging waste. But there's a lot to be done on the hazardous waste, PFAS and all those kinds of things. We have brought in bans on those kinds of things. We have, there are a lot of legislative pieces that we will bring and correctly and should justifiably change the way we do businesses and look at the hazards that we have in our industry, in our, in our community. And give them incentives, but also provide us, provide them with a runway to get out of those kinds of things that pollute our atmosphere. And we can do this. We can do this together. We need to put a lot more dollars into that. And the state has to be the one to mandate that so that we can implement it. We do the inspections for hazardous waste, but we can't mandate that something is, is going to be banned or it's got a runway and it no longer can be produced. That's at the state level. But are we working with them? Are we talking to them about it? Absolutely, we're doing that. And we want those same things that a lot of us want. We want a cleaner environment and we don't want contamination in our food and our water and our air.
This is sort of a related question on recycling. How can the Board of Commissioners develop more resident business, especially restaurant, and multi-housing recycling and composting?
Well, one thing we could do is we could sure make it a heck of a lot easier. The biggest scam is the plastics industry. Now, the triangle, that's not a recycling triangle. That's a triangle that they co-opted. They put their little number in there and you can barely read it. And people don't know, you can't recycle black plastic, but it's got that little thing on it. "Oh, isn't it recyclable?" No. If it's got food waste on it, at least in this county, can you recycle it? No. But people don't know this. People don't know that ones, twos and some fives. Well, which fives? I don't even know which fives and I'm an environmental engineer. I can't tell by looking at that plastic to tell you which five. I'll accept that if it's a color, I won't recycle it. You know, so you don't know. And so we think that there should be transparency, that there should be a whole new system, how to certify plastics. And then people would know how to recycle things once and for all. And so if they knew that, then things, you know how much time they spend in those facilities knocking out all this stuff that can't be recycled? It's hours and hours and huge machinery and millions of dollars to get the little bit of plastic that we do have that's recycled. That's a travesty and it's the plastics industry that needs to step up to the plate and do something very different.
Here's a question about climate change. What action item would you propose to help mitigate the effects of climate change? And if you have more than one, that would be great also.
We're working on that in a big way. I have to tell you that when I came to the county, we didn't have a climate change plan. We didn't really have an environmental plan. We were doing nice things internally. We were trying to save energy and stuff like this, but we had nothing. I brought that to the board. I was the one who did that. I was astounded that we didn't have anything like that. We didn't have sustainability, any kind of thing. It was all led internally and it was all driven by money, not necessarily what was best for everybody. So we decided the first thing we were going to do is a zero-waste initiative, which is incredible to figure out and how we, could we educate the general public about how you can cut down on waste, what you can do. And of course, the organics recycling is also a big piece of that. That was mandated down from the state. A lot of people have complained because they don't like the idea that they have to put the organics in another bin or they don't want to participate and they don't want to pay for it. And I'm going, "Well, then you should talk to your state legislature. We're the ones who have to implement it. We're for it, but you know, they're the ones who wrote the law to do this." So we're, we're supporting, we're working in partnership with that and we're taking times out in community. One of the things that I love is that we're out at the community in the farmer's markets. And every year, we give away so many rain barrels. And then we also have them for purchase at a much lower cost for folks too. They go in hot cases. They're up online and they're all bought before we ever get to the farmer's market. These are the kinds of things that we're doing at the local level so people can do that. We also have mitigating issues where we have cooling centers for folks. They can call, they can get a free ride to a cooling center. We have call checks where we can call on elderly to see if they're okay in emergency situations such as snowstorms and things of that. So we are doing a lot on the mitigation, but we're also doing a lot of implementation on how do we make our environment better.
This is a question about libraries. How do you see the role of the Hennepin County Libraries in the future?
Well, I love our libraries and I'm so glad. I always ask to stay on the libraries. And I also have Milsa, which is the district, huge district. And they're the ones who get the dollars for all the electronic books and the electronic systems and everything and implement that into your county libraries. So I sit on both those boards. And I see that this is one of the last bastions of true, public free space for people to use. And what's so astounding is people say, "Oh, a library's going to disappear because of, because of eBooks and everything's going electronic." No, they haven't. All the programming that goes on your library is so fascinating. If you're ever bored, especially through the winter, you should go to your library and see all the great programs that's going on. And the Southdale Library here, that's going to change things. We're going to have the Edina Arts Center along with- We're going to have the Edina Arts Center, along with, Richfield will be in there from time to time, the arts center there from Richfield, to help out, to do those things. We have lending libraries. We have toy libraries. We have tool libraries. We have storytimes for kids. We're going to have an outdoor space in the Southdale Library, where we're planting a prairie, so we can have classes on how you can bring the prairie back, and what native plantings are going to be like there. These are the things that people are going to learn at their library. We have authors come in and talk on a regular basis. So there's so much activity going on for your children or for yourself. We have bookmobiles that go around, not just to our kids, but to our seniors, to connect them with their libraries too. And in your library, you can check out an iPad, you can check out a computer. All kinds of things are available there. Movies that stream, music that streams for free. People don't realize how much you can get out of your libraries for free. Movies. Don't pay for movies. Go get them at the library.
So if a person would like to follow more closely the work of the county board, I assume they would look online to discover when the committees and the board as a whole would meet? Is that information readily available online?
It absolutely is, and all of it's archived too, for many, many years back. So sometimes, when I want to go look at something way back, I have my office staff go start looking at some of the old videos and some of the agendas to try to find some of the information, that we're looking to find out dates when certain things had happened, or spans of times. But everything is recorded. It's all broadcast. And in fact, we're trying to go live on YouTube with closed caption right now. One of the things that the disability community brought to my attention is that our closed caption is really difficult for them, because they have to know how to maneuver within their own electronics to turn it on or off, and some of them don't have the capabilities of doing that. Where Minneapolis is already closed captioned, we are moving in that direction, so that we will be even more accessible to all people, so that they can do it. So you can look at that stuff on YouTube if you want to, too. Or you can go up on the Hennepin and just Google "board materials" or "board meetings", and you'll get right to some of the sites, and you can start pushing the buttons and seeing those things. Our county board briefings are not necessarily televised, but they are all recorded, so you can actually get the recordings for those too. And those are going to happen. The briefings are going to speed up pretty quick, because we're going into budget time. I run the budget, and so all those will be recorded. And lots of times too, you can just come live and watch them if you're downtown. People don't realize that you can come downtown and just sit into the county board and watch them.
So are all the meetings and committee meetings held downtown?
Yes.
In the Hennepin County Government Center?
They are.
Okay, thank you. So we are almost out of time, but we'd like to give you a chance to address any topic you would like for two minutes, either that you have touched on, or something perhaps that hasn't been discussed.
Well, just let me tell you about what's going on in Hennepin County right now, about some of the beliefs and thoughts that I have. You know, I talked about why I wanted to run, and that I want to help people. We're a safety net. Unfortunately, there are some holes in our safety net. Our call percentage for SNAP, which is a food assistance, is up 300%. We have hired 25 more individuals to respond to that, and we are not getting ahead. So some things, where I talked about the evictions are getting better, we're housing more people in some ways, not everything is perfect here. And so we are giving more money to our food banks, so that we can, hopefully, they can go there. So when they can't get through the lines right away and get through their certification, we'll help walk them through the process, but we're putting money at the food bank so that they can get food. Also, the same thing for some of the assistance, for some of the emergency, for housing and for medical aid. But I urge them to call our office, because we can handwalk things through the system sometimes. And sometimes, there is an error in needing specific information, and we can help them gather that. Those safety nets matter. Not everybody came out of this pandemic doing fabulously. Our kids are still struggling with mental health. That was brought up tonight. There are people who still don't have enough food on the table, and that's a really sad place to be. There are still people who are grieving over the last, lost loved ones from the pandemic. People lost major parts of their family, some of them. They're not, they're not coming out of this hole. And so we need to be there for them. That's why we want to have the mental health regional facility for our kids. That's why we want more mental health available to all of them in their schools. And that's why we need to get more people and more help from the state to address the hunger in our communities. So if you can volunteer to make meals for people, to do something at your local food shelf, ours is VPier, I encourage you to do that. We're trying to stop that whole safety net piece. We're trying to sew it up. Thank you.
So that's all the time we have now for questions. And so now, Debbie Gutell, we invite you to make any closing remarks you'd like to for one minute.
I just want to say how honored I am to be serving in Hennepin County. You know, I never knew how much this job would mean to me until I got here. I never knew how much it would bring to my own soul, seeing, helping other people to save their souls. You know, when they're down and out. Some of these people, I see right along in an EMT, you see them on their worst day. Those are the people we see coming through our community, the homeless people. Go down and talk to some of those people, and a camp one I have. Have them come into your office and talk to you. It's an honor to serve these people and put their lives together. There was a man through the pandemic who was six years homeless, who was, he had a murder conviction. I talked to him every week for over a year and a half. We housed that man. Those stories matter to me. The residents of the community I serve, you matter to me. And if you need help, please call the office. I'll be there.
Thank you very much for participating in this forum today, and for your willingness to participate in the democratic process by running for public office. Thank you very much to the City of Bloomington for their technical expertise and for the use of the city council chambers. Thank you to the League of Women Voters Bloomington and the League of Women Voters Richfield for sponsoring this forum. And thank you for all the volunteers tonight. Appreciate your help very much. This forum has been video-recorded in its entirety, and it can be viewed unedited on YouTube, and there will be links on the City of Bloomington website, and on the LWV Bloomington and Richfield websites, and it will be rebroadcast on Bloomington Cable TV until Election Day. Welcome and thank you to future online and cable TV audiences. I remind everyone to remember to vote on or before Tuesday, November 5. For information about voter registration, voting early, and voting in person, please visit the Minnesota Secretary of State's website, which is mnvotes.gov. And if the candidate can stay afterwards, the audience is invited to visit informally following the forum. This concludes tonight's forum. Let's give the candidate a round of applause.[1768.73][1768.73][applause] Thank you, everyone, and good evening.